Good morning. In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law in section 101.021 of the codified ordinance of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the city planning department conducts its meetings according to Robert's rules of order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Abstentions from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting has the opportunity to be heard, we ask that you use the raise hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raise hand feature can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version and activated by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. Chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the WebEx screen. Call in users can unmute by using star six. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being livestreamed via YouTube. All requests to speak on a particular matter via our website and email have been considered. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. Mr. Chairman, the meeting is yours.
Great. Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Present.
Downing.
Present.
Lucker.
Present.
Curry.
Present.
McCray Scott.
Present.
Hall. Slide. Mr. Chairman, we do have a quorum.
Okay, great. We'll get going. The first are three pieces that we left on the table last time. The first one is downtown design review. This is for Boulevard Road apartments, new construction seeking schematic approval. We did see this, but we didn't have a quorum at the end to take a vote. Who's going to be presenting this one?
Mr. Chairman, the consensus I felt from the last meeting was that the representatives did not need to be here for this.
Yeah, they didn't. I just was wondering if someone had the slides that we can show them to the people that weren't here. So, commission members, if you remember this, this is, we've seen this before. This is a thing of properties. We did see the whole thing. These are the context pictures. This is right across from the cemetery. This shows the parking structure. Wrapped in units. And then the units above. And this is seeking schematic design approval. The consensus of the people that were here, they thought it was a good project and recommended schematic approval. There are a few conditions from design review and probably the appropriate thing would be to accept it with the the comments from design review.
I move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second further discussion. Michael, call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Special presentation, public art. This is Asian Town. We saw this too. Can we flip through these slides? This is some, that was examples of the artist's work before. This is the building.
And that signage is being removed.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second further discussion. Call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries the last one. Tara, you want to go through this?
Thank you. Yeah, I can go through it. This is.
I heard you, so I figured this is you.
Yeah, they both were. It's fine. This is a sculpture and little library in Asia Town by a local Asian American artist. It's going to be made of welded steel with a one-foot concrete footer wrapped in vinyl. And it's inspired by robot kits that the artist's father would give him as he was young. As I was saying, it's sculpture slash little library, so that's showing where the books will go. And it's going to be at the Asia Town Plaza.
I move approval. Downing.
Second, Curry.
And motion and second for the discussion. Michael, call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Well, my dogs were excited about that. They're barking.
Thank you.
The Downing map amendment, it's an unnumbered ordinance. This is changing use area and height district of parcels of land north of St. Clair Avenue between 90th and East 105. Who's going to be presenting this?
Shannon Leonard, City Planning.
Hey, Shannon. I guess you have a couple here then.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
So this, this came about to us. There is a large investment in this area for the old Boardwalk Empire Apartments. Quite a few properties, 20 properties in all. So this map change was really spirit out of that redevelopment or rehabilitation. Next slide, please. So again, this is a proposal is to facilitate the rehabilitation of the historic Boardwalk Apartments and other multifamily apartment buildings in the neighborhood. This will permit a variety of residential use choices by right to enhance the recent investment in larger sites in the neighborhood, including the Charles Lake site. There's an RFP, I believe, out for that, as well as the Empire School redevelopment site. This will also align existing land uses with the zoning to enhance the character of the neighborhood. And it'll assure that the new rehabilitation and development is advancing the city's health, equity, safety, and sustainability goals. Next slide, please. And so this map change really is a variety of just properties throughout this area. This is along Colonial between East 91st and East 93rd. It's historic multifamily buildings that are currently existing. We are simply just requesting to update the zoning from this area is all zoned to family residential. So we're just bringing the zoning in line with the current land use to multifamily. Next slide, please. This is another multifamily property. We're just requesting to update these properties as well to multifamily. Next slide, please. This property here is also a historic multifamily unit. I believe actually as of like two days ago that this was demolished. So we may just remove this from the current map change. Next slide, please. Again, this is another multifamily unit right north of the East 99th, the intersection there. Next slide, please. Again, these are multifamily units, the Boardwalk Apartments. They are currently zoned to family. We are proposing to change them also to multifamily. The major driving force of this is because of the financing issues associated with our non-conforming clause. So chapter 359.03 states that if more than 50% is destroyed by fire, act of God, or whatever cause, that it has to be rebuilt to two families. So if something were to happen to these units, they would not be able to be rebuilt by right to multifamily. So again, we're proposing all of these units to rezone them to multifamily so that these units specifically that are already purchased and are looking to be rehabilitated. But any of the other properties in this area could also be rehabilitated should another developer come through and want to do the same. Next slide, please. Again, this is another section. These are the Steeplechase. This is actually, this property here is just another multifamily unit. Next slide. And these are the Steeplechase Apartments. They're currently also zoned to family. And so we're just requesting to change the zoning to match the land use. Next slide, please. And so again, you can see here on this map, this is basically showing all of the properties that Salis is development developer that had bought up the Boardwalk Apartments that are rehabilitating all of them. You can see in green, there are only two or three properties of theirs that needed that upgrade from the two-family to multifamily. And the yellow is showing where there's current investment in the pipeline for development in this area north of St. Clair and immediately south of St. Clair between East 83rd and East 105. Next slide, please. And again, so this is really just upgrading the zoning to match the current land use so that Salis can move forward with their project, but also any future redevelopment or rehabilitation of some of the existing units that are currently multifamily can get that proper funding so they can be rehabilitated. Any questions?
Commission members, any questions before we move to public comments?
Mr. Chair, to Shannon, is a portion of this in the St. Clair Superior neighborhood?
Right. So this is Councilman Hairston as well as the Steeplechase Apartments, as well as the two properties along the east 103rd there are in Councilman Conwell's ward. And so we've received support letters from both Councilman Hairston and Councilman Conwell.
I guess you didn't understand my question. Is the port, does this zoning change impact a portion of the St. Clair Superior service area?
Oh, yeah. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I believe it does.
Thanks, Shannon. Then that's why I must recuse myself. Thank you.
Thank you, August. Okay, so this is a public meeting. We're going to hear from proponents, those people in favor of the zoning change, and then opponents, those people against the zoning change. We ask you to keep your comments to three minutes or less so we can move on to other matters. Proponents, people in favor of the zoning change? Proponents. Worries. Do we have anyone?
Not seeing anyone.
Okay. Opponents, people against the zoning change? Opponents.
Again, no hands raised.
Okay, commission members.
I move approval. Downing.
Second, Curry.
We have a motion and second further discussion. Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slide.
Motion carries and August recused himself. The next is a conditional use permit in a pedestrian overlay district. This is permanent parcel number 02523026. This is at 15736 Lorain Avenue. This is per section 343.23E2. Driveway extending across public sidewalk in institutional use. Shannon, are you doing this one too?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, please.
Shannon Leonard, City Planning. So this case is a proposal to use a suite in this building as an event center, a meeting center. The applicant is hoping to do birthday parties, baby showers, kids' events, and meetings. She's an event planner, and so we have a tenant and landlord. The tenant is the owner of La Suites Events. She's an event planner. Her name is Prashana Brown. And the applicant, the owner, is Mr. Dan Paccas. He owns this building. So next slide, please. And so this, this use here is for conditional use. The first is for the driveway across a public sidewalk. And so essentially, you just must decide if the size, shape, and layout of the subject property does not permit placement of parking, loading, or driveway in a more suitable location. And if they were to remove it, if it would cause vacancy. And so as you can see here, this driveway, this is a pretty much a landlocked property. At the corner there, there's parking to the left on another parcel. And to the right, there is a used car lot. And so the driveway here exists to the right of the building. Next slide, please. And then the second thing is this can be kind of confusing. So a place of assembly, like an event center or church, is considered an institutional use under our zoning code under the pedestrian retail overlay. The assembly use is triggering an assembly permit through building and housing. And so it requires the planning commission's approval to allow this as an institutional use at this location. Next slide, please. And so when you have a residential institutional non-retail office use in a pedestrian retail overlay, you must decide whether the subject building space was designed specifically for this type of proposed use or denial of this application would result in long-term vacancy of the subject property as demonstrated by the applicant or the proposed use is needed in the immediate area and suitable alternative locations are not available. Next slide, please. And so essentially here, you're just deciding whether conditional use is a driveway extending across a public sidewalk. The applicant, the owner of the property, would need this regardless of which tenant was applying for an application for the parking lot. And then for this specific application, whether that institutional use is a relative conditional use of this location. We have had some discussions with the applicant and the tenant. The CDC, I believe, has chimed in, the councilmen, as well as met with Director Collier as a group to discuss different ways that this potential use could be possible at this location or not possible. And so I believe Ms. Prashana Brown is here, Mr. Paccas is here. I believe Ben Campbell from the CDC is here and Director Collier.
All right, great. So why don't we hear from the applicant first?
My name is Dan Paccas. My family owns the property. Specifically, we are looking to get the conditional use for Ms. Brown's business. She had signed the lease to be within the business. We were unaware there was an assembly type code for her type of business. So now we are asking for conditional use approval. The property itself is difficult, that particular store is hard to rent. It has sat vacant for 15 years because of the size of it. And what Ms. Brown is using it for is actually a good use for that area. It's just a wide open area, basically showing allows 48 people for use, which allows for about 27 square foot per person to assemble within the area because it's such a large area. So we're requesting her be permitted to rent the area for the type of business that she's proposing.
Thanks, Dan. CDC, who's here from the CDC? Is there someone from the CDC to speak?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Couldn't get unmuted. My name is Ben Campbell. I'm here from West Park. Good morning. I believe that why our director, Rosemary Mudry, sent a letter to Mr. Davenport and Mr. Bozak. Was that received?
And I forwarded that to Director Collier.
Okay, so unfortunately, in this case, we cannot support it based on concerns that have come to us from the community, primarily around parking. And those issues are identified in the letter. I've talked to Ms. Brown and Mr. Paccas. I understand what they're trying to do there. It's just a question of is there enough parking to support that use? Particularly the concerns that came up from business owners with parking was event patrons were using their parking and taking away from their customers. So again, unfortunately, we are not in support of this.
All right, Ben. Freddie?
Yeah, so we did receive this letter that's being referenced by Mr. Campbell and understand that this is a parking issue. I would like for you, as the commissioner, to hear from Ms. Brown to discuss the type of use and activities that are here and have let her give her testimony because she was the only one who has not spoken with respect to the situation here. And then I'll opine last.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Hello. Hello, my name is Prashana Brown. And I am asking to use the use of 15736 Lorain Avenue for an event center. The type of events that I do are AAA meetings for small women's groups such as people who have been free of drugs for 10 years or more. I also do a host of engagement proposals, some baby showers, some birthday parties, some kid events. I also host the various of meetings there also. In regards to the parking, I have spoke with a couple of the business owners in the area. It have came to a resolution since maybe the complaints have been coming in. I have gotten a verbal agreement from Seven Seas Seafood to use their parking after their store hours. So when they're closed, 4:00 p.m. after, we're allowed to use their parking. As other, their street parking, that may be considered. See, I just want to touch bases on everything with the parking. Just as far as the whole business itself, I deal with a lot of small intimate clients. So the, the business and clientele there is not too, I don't deal with no more than maybe like 48 people. Event, as far as meetings, 10, 10 people, groups of 10 people or less for my small AA meetings that I host on Wednesdays. The hours of operation is normally from Friday to Sunday, and that varies between 5:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. For those hours only, some Wednesdays mainly closed on Monday, Tuesdays, and Thursdays. Not unless someone wants to help with various of meetings such as small group meetings, small business meetings. This is what the space is for. I think that it could be a good benefit to the community considering that they don't have a lot of spaces around the area for that use. It's not really so much considered, I don't too much deal with a lot of high-end parties. So I don't want you to, when you think event center, this is not your typical event center. I like to call it a small social gathering space because of the small amount of clientele that I deal with and small groups of people. So I just want to consider that with approval or non-approval with moving forward. Pretty much think I maybe may have covered everything.
Thank you very much. Freddie, go ahead.
Yeah, so we had a really robust conversation with respect to this and heard from the community around their concerns that were expressed to us. And the uses that are going on here necessarily match up with what the perceptions were with respect to the activities that were outlined in our discussions with respect to the concerns that the community had. As Ms. Brown went on to explain the type of activities that take place here, they're not adverse activities with respect to the community. They're actually beneficial. However, with the issue at hand as far as the parking, the building, as you can see, is a one-story retail shop front scenario with parking, you know, on the side. Given the type of traffic or activity that happens here, it does necessitate arrangements being made with other property owners. Apparently, she has made those arrangements. From a departmental perspective, we did not have issue with this particular use or this type of parking situation, understanding that she has an agreement with the property owner. And Ms. Brown, the property owner that you have an agreement, you said it was a verbal agreement. Do you have anything in writing affirming that you're able to utilize the parking spaces needed when necessary?
He said that he was unable to do a written agreement due to the facts of one side of his parking lot, he does make available and have a written agreement with Irish 32 Bar. So he just didn't want it to clash considering that there is no separation in the parking lot.
Yeah, and I do also want to say too, with respect to Ms. Brown, keep in mind she's the person leasing the facility. With respect to Mr. Dan, the property owner, understanding on the scenario that you put yourself in when you make arrangements or a lease agreement with tenants, I think is very important. And I do appreciate the candor that was shared on the phone by Mr. Dan, who indicated that he was, you know, just unaware of some of the regulatory nuances. So we spent some time on the phone, myself, the councilperson, and everyone involved, educating them about the process. And they are here today, you know, to ask for this relief. So from our perspective, from the department, we don't take issue with this. However, there is some difference of opinion with respect to the CDC.
Thank you, Freddie.
Thank you.
It sounds like 15 years of being vacant is not a good idea either to go back into that. So commission members, questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman, to either Mr. Collier or the applicant or the CDC. It sounds like there's a couple of issues that are going on here. One thing that caught my attention is, I think Mr. Campbell stated that the total occupancy as the space is currently configured is 27. Ms. Brown indicated she has groups up to 48 people. So that raises a red flag for me. The second question I have is, where are we in this? Is this a permitted use? Do they have an occupancy permit? Does this have to go back to zoning? I really don't know if I truly totally understand the gravity of what we've been asked to deliberate in here. Thank you.
Could answer that, August. Shannon Leonard. So the, it does go to Board of Zoning Appeals on Monday, December 20th. It had been scheduled for Board of Zoning Appeals a few weeks ago. It had been scheduled for Board of Zoning Appeals a few weeks ago without realizing that this was in a pedestrian retail overlay and needed to come before you all. So she is trying to get an occupancy permit. She has been in operation, I believe, since July. And so in terms of the occupancy of this location, the front space has about thirteen hundred square feet and the back space has another twelve hundred square feet. So I'm not sure what building and housing determines occupancy load for that amount of space. And so that's really a building and housing question. But they are seeking an occupancy permit. But before they get that occupancy permit, they do need conditional uses. In regards to the disconnect of activities and uses, again, this happens a lot when business owners sign leases with landlords and they're not aware, neither one is aware that they need an occupancy permit. And so what happens is they start operating and then somebody notices, oh, this establishment is here, makes a complaint, they obtain a violation notice for changing the use without getting a permit. And so I believe that happened in November. In terms of the Board of Zoning Appeal, a notice went out saying this person would like to open up a event center at this location. That this is not permitted in the underlying zoning, which is local retail. And then the other variance they need is obviously parking for an event center is three times the gross floor area. In this case, they would need twenty six spaces. And so the usable gross floor area here is that one thousand three hundred. And so that is twenty six spaces. They get a thirty three percent reduction in the pedestrian retail overlay. And so ultimately, there were complaints, I think, to the CDC and the councilmen regarding the use of this location. At the same time, they may not have been aware of exactly what type of events were occurring here. They just saw that Ms. Prashana Brown wanted to open a event center, party center at the location. And so that's really what I think this may boil down to. So I don't know if like there's any other complaints beyond that, that the landlord or the applicant could divulge of that they may be aware of. But again, they need an occupancy permit and that's why they're here at Planning Commission. Again, here at Planning Commission, you're just simply deciding whether the event use considered an institutional use in a pedestrian retail overlay is acceptable based on if the subject building was designed specifically for this type of proposed use or denial of the application will result in long-term vacancy or if the proposed use is needed in the immediate area. And then secondly, the driveway over a public sidewalk. And again, is is there a more suitable location for that driveway is really what you're deciding for this. And then the Board of Zoning Appeals will determine whether the event center is a permissible use in a local retail district as well as if she satisfies their parking concerns with the three times gross floor area needed for an event center.
Mr. Chairman, we have Councilman Slyfe and then Director Collier with their hands raised.
I don't want to, on just to that, answer your question or did you have additional questions? I don't want to cut you off.
Yeah, it sounds like they're asking for forgiveness and not permission. And there's a lot of other layers here that might require variances or adjustments in what they're trying to do. So I think it answers my question. Thanks, Mr. Slyfe.
Just wanted to double check. So thank you. This is in Ward seventeen. And I've been engaged with the tenant, the CDC and the owner. And just to kind of rehash the story a little bit. So this use opened earlier this year and July. And my understanding from, you know, shortly after the opening, the CDC reached out to both the owner and the tenant with concerns that this was not an appropriate use in this zoning district and that there were steps to go through to establish the use, to seek variances. Now, that's, I'm not saying that everybody should know those processes in and out, especially I don't expect a tenant to know all of those details. However, it was until this continued to operate until a violation was issued in November. And and to me, what I think the problem we have right now is we're approving this backwards. So the violation was issued for the zoning issue, a general retail use in local retail. So it was kicked the Board of Zoning Appeals. Board of Zoning Appeals has now said they can't rule until planning grants to use in the P R O. If this had been done correctly, the change of use would have come in as the first step. And and my, by looking at the site plan, understanding what's being proposed, I'm not sure that this would even receive approval from the building code review because a combination of the occupancy, the number of bathrooms, ingress and egress. You know, I'm not, I'm not certain that this space is allowable to have. Type occupancy might be limited to as low as fourteen if there's only one bathroom. So I've been, I've been clear with the tenant and the property owner that I'm not supportive of the ultimate granting of the variances. I share the concerns with parking and noise. Those have been brought to me by the neighborhood. I reached out to Seven Seas and they explained to me that while they have no issue with people parking in their lot after hours, they do have a signed formal agreement with a neighboring establishment. And should it become problematic that there's not enough parking for that neighboring establishment, then people from an event center, any other use would be unwilling to use their excess parking and be liable to towing. So I don't, I'm not confident that there's a satisfactory agreement in place that secures parking into the long term. And then my other point is simply that by granting the conditional use or granting this use in the P R O, we are essentially allowing an assembly use into the future. And when I hear people upset about noise and parking, the way I guess I kind of couch it is unlike a retail store where there's turnover of parking or people kind of come and go at a steady stream. You know, in an event space, people all come and then the event leaves and people all leave. And just the very nature of people leaving a space en masse is going to create, you know, parking issues, traffic issues, noise issues. It's just, it's sort of part and piecemeal to what the use is. And and an explanation of why it's not allowable in limited retail or a P R O. So for that reason, I, you know, I'm not supporting the use. I, my understanding is that if it does not pass a planning commission today, then essentially the Board of Zoning Appeals can't rule on it. I'll defer to the Planning Commission staff for those details. But since, since, you know, I think just sequentially, my consistent vote would be no or request would be no at all commissions. Then just the info on the slide ahead of us, you know, would this create a long-term vacancy as demonstrated by the applicant? While the vacancy has been long-term, I'm not confident that, you know, this is the only type of use that can occur here. And and that there aren't suitable alternative locations. And in the letter, if you haven't seen it, Rosemary Mudry did offer her staff's site selection services to help the tenant find an alternate location in the neighborhood.
So I just want to add, if I may, and it's, it's, it's obviously what the verdict is going to be here, but I'm gonna say, and I'm gonna spook my mind here today. You know, we've permitted four other event centers in twenty twenty one in PROs, four. We always throw around terms like precedent and this, that and the other. And when I hear the type of activities that go on in here, they don't match up with some of the issues that have been raised. And there's very different perceptions about the whole noise and crowding and parking. And, you know, you have, I believe it's a pub or whatever, maybe adjacent or across the street from this. So it, it just, those types of ancillary, you know, questions and comments that, you know, take place, it just gives me pause. And I take issue with that. Now, this is a young entrepreneur who signed a lease with the property owner. That property owner and that leasing have an understanding about the type of activities that go on in here. Not knowing, and I agree with the councilmen on that point with respect to the owner, not knowing does not mean that you're not responsible. However, you know, the P R O was established here. This building footprint has existed. The parking lot has existed. When we apply these PROs, the goal is to, as development happens, move development in a direction to be more walkable. This particular situation and configuration is not changing. So for us, that is in part why we didn't have an issue with this, you know, looking at previous cases, understanding what the existing conditions were here are, understanding what the most pressing of the community concerns were, which didn't necessarily jive with the transactions that are articulated by Ms. Brown. We struggled with that. So obviously, the Planning Commission has the authority to do what it will. And we're just providing our perspective and testimony and part of the conversation that I gained, so part of the clarity that I gained from the conversation that we had the other day where everyone was on the call and I wanted to be sure that everyone heard this same thing. Because too often conversations are fragmented and there's piecemeal information that happens. But I think that everyone understands clearly what this young lady has been engaged in, the type of activities she's been dealing with. The scenario with the actual property owner and the gentleman Dan who's doing business for his mom, who's actually the property owner. And just understanding that we have approved scenarios that I think are much more, I'm going to say aggressive than this in PROs. So just as the Planning Commission, keep that in mind. Thanks.
Thanks, Freddie. So planning, well, Charles, let me ask you this question. So is it worth the exercise of having someone look at this for ingress and egress? Make sure what the occupancy can truly be and give Ms. Brown some time to have something in pencil saying she's got some parking for whatever that occupancy could be?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't believe it is at this point just based on the feedback from the community and that the occupancy doesn't necessarily resolve the underlying parking issue.
All right. Well, commissioner members?
I don't know where I can raise my hand. I'm a family-owned property.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Dan.
So just a quick question. So if my understanding is what's going on with this, there's actually two issues. The conditional use, not so much a conditional use, but also a driveway access. Those are two things that you have to approve today. Because my question is, if you deny everything, does that mean we can't use a driveway and parking anymore? So that's, that's why my only question is, because I have five other businesses there.
No, and I get that. So realistically, I don't think anyone takes issue with the driveway as far as I know.
I'd add to that, Dan, that, and Dave, that I think planning staff, we could get a deeper understanding of that parking aspect of it, just because I see that as people's got curb cuts everywhere and that's an existing use throughout the city. And is that I understand from the aspect of if this were new construction, but is that something that we should be holding over property owners as they're, you know, changing tenants and things like that, that they're in the existing condition? If that's something that can just be administrative or something, I'd personally be okay with that. I don't know where the rest of my colleagues are on that. But to me, the real crux of the discussion is, is this slide and not the parking slide.
Mr. Slyfe, I guess I'm trying to understand why the community is against it because I'm not really clear. And I think Mr. Collier asked or pointed out if this applicant's able to meet all the criteria for the building department, secure parking off-site, which would require variance, it just needs to acknowledge it. Then you're saying that this still would not be accepted by the community. I don't know what the issue here is. I'm just trying to
There's, you know, I because this property has been opened and operating, you know, I think that there's, the, the, the residents have an impression. And quite frankly, I'm a little confused myself on the hours. I've been told from operating, business owners nearby that there's, you know, been events going into the early morning hours. So so when we talk about noise, I think it's the congregation of people, but also the hours and that that information conflicts with what the tenant and business owner have stated. I've heard it from a number of quarters though, and that is, is one of the primary concerns of immediate neighbors, especially neighbors immediately to the north of this in adjacent residences.
So you're saying that the bars use is less benign or than what she's advocating for? I guess I'm not really following that.
Well, the bar, the bars across the street and and bar uses, of course, are not benign. And and I'm not going to say that there are incidences from time to time at bars. But the question is, you know, this, you have to kind of grandfathered uses for versus the the agreed-upon community decision to have this be a local retail district. And our intentionality in attempting to make this portion of Lorraine Avenue, which is heavily car-centric, overly wide, auto-oriented, feel more like a part of the neighborhood. And and so something that people can walk down to the end of the street and get local retail as as this building was designed for.
Excuse me, Chair? Shannon Leonard. So the driveway or the public sidewalk, so you can approve one, deny the other, approve both or deny both. The driveway or the public sidewalk, whether it's this tenant or another tenant, at another time, Mr. Pakus would have to come back before Planning Commission for that conditional use. Anytime there's a change of use. Now, if you were to approve the driveway over the public sidewalk today, then he's, he's just grandfathered in going forward for any future tenant. And then in regards to the institutional use of this location, you can approve it with conditions, say, okay, Ms. Brown can only be open between these hours, et cetera. You can add whatever conditions that you may feel is necessary so that the business can continue operating or whatever have you. She still has to go get the variances. Now, if you deny the case today or you deny any of the conditional uses today, the next steps for the applicant and owner would be to appeal Planning Commission denials or they just stop. You can't, they can't get a building permit without the conditional uses and they can't get a building permit without the variances.
Okay, so I guess because we don't want to spend the rest of our hours on this one case. It sounds like because there are tenants and this is an existing building. And when you look, I don't know where else it would put a driveway except over the sidewalk. Maybe we can break it apart a little bit. My only question is, is it worth the exercise of tabling the conditional use part? Because there needs to be a conversation, one, of egress, going back to Fluker's conversation. And two, I mean, I don't know that anyone wants a business to leave this area. You know, can it be made appropriate for this space or can it find another space? But I think the driveway, especially since there's five other tenants, needs to move forward. Planning Commission members?
I think I'm going to move to table this because I, to Charles, Mr. Slyfe pointed out something and I I'm not really sure how this should work in terms of the progression of where, where one goes first, second, third. And because I, I think we've had this situation before, but I think there's a path. I just think these guys should probably try another conversation and not talk at each other and can, and understand what each of, each of the parties are trying to articulate, in my opinion. So I stand by tabling this right now.
So we have a motion to table both of them or just one?
Right now, I, not that I'm confused, but I'd rather, I'd rather revisit both at this point.
Okay, we have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second, further discussion. We have a motion and second, further discussion. Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
No.
Slade.
No.
Motion carries. The next grouping we have are schools that are going to be sold to different property owners or new property owners. It's page six through page fifteen. We're going to hear all of them at once. And I have a conflict with page number twelve, the Global School Properties Ohio LLC. And Lillian, can you run this meeting? Because I'm going to recuse myself, because we're going to hear them all at once.
Uh, sure.
That one I'm having a conflict with, thanks.
Okay.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
I can, good morning.
Morning. Good morning, members of the commission. Okay, so that's good to know. I was wondering how I should best proceed through this. What I'm going to do is just kind of give a brief overview as to what brought us here to this point and in our process. And then I'll just very briefly go through each proposal, just the location, what's being proposed for the use, and who the developer is for the project. Now, so this slide was not on my PowerPoint. I'm not sure what this one is. If you go to the next slide.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, to Maurice, if you could just scroll through all of these ordinances, the presentation is at the end, and then we'll go back and work on each individual piece of legislation.
Okay, I think that makes sense. There you go.
And so the one question that I would ask you, the slides themselves are in alphabetical order and not in order by ordinance. So if you prefer them, if you prefer me to speak in order of ordinance, I can point to the slide number, but otherwise I can go straight through this way.
No, I think what would be useful is just as you go through each one, just, you know, say where the site is. I can see the key map down to the right, which shows where in the city the site is. So if you can just, you know, bring our attention to where it is. And before you go into each one, maybe give us a sense of, sort of, they are all, you know, from what I understand, we're basically looking at an acquisition of all of these schools, right? For each, each one is a little different, but you might want to just give us the context for each two.
Right, so I'm going to give you just a quick overview. So I've been here before on the Allen School site. There are nineteen school sites that CMSD wants to, wanted to put out for potential development. And so as a result, the city worked with the Metropolitan School District to issue an RFQ to list the proposals for each of those nineteen sites. Of those sites, twelve are, have buildings on them, and seven are vacant land. And so again, the two that have already gone through a mound and a raper, there are ten here, and that'll leave a balance of, what, about seven that we'll come back at a later date for. So the city worked with CMSD and scored these proposals, awarded them to different developers, which I'll point to here. What we looked at, as we looked at the proposed future use, was developer capacity, to make sure that the developer did have the ability to carry out the proposal. We looked at their history, financial capacity, feasibility of the proposal, as well as the community's interest in seeing that development occur there. So these ten sites that we're about to go through are in various stages of due diligence. So I don't have any of the development teams here with me, because these, again, are, we're ready to move forward on the potential transfer of these, but they are in various stages of due diligence. And what that due diligence means, as the developers pull together their capital stack, get into their final plans and construction drawings, all of those things have to be submitted and approved. So prior to us transferring any of these sites over, there will be commitments that need to be met. There will be timeline benchmarks. They will have to have all of their financials together, and things of that nature. We will have reversionary clauses in all of these deeds if the developer doesn't come through with the development. And any other zoning, historic pieces, environmental reviews, anything that has to be done, the developers will still have to go through all of those city processes and processes tied to the funding that they receive. We'll have them on a timeline for each proposed project. And so that pretty much is it. But there are conditions that each developer will have to meet. So we're not just going to transfer the land over, but it will happen as time permits us to do it. We just want to have the ability to be able to move on, at a level of timing that is conducive to the project's success. Okay. Okay. So with that, I can go into the first piece here. This is Autobahn Middle School, which is located at at thirty fifty-five Martin Luther King Junior Drive in the Mount Pleasant neighborhood. The award was given to the community builders in partnership with Burtonville Car Development Corporation. The proposal for this one is for hundred-seven affordable apartments, which would meet all incomes. It is, it's a multi-use senior housing development, which would include office and community space. They actually will restore the grand ballroom as well and Kalanate Library. The appraisal came in, and I should have said earlier, CMSD did get appraisals on all of the properties that are in the RFQ. The proposed appraisal, the appraisal for this one was seventy-eight thousand. The community builders actually came in with an offer of one point four million for this property. The next slide, please. Central High School, which is at twenty-two twenty-five East Fortieth Street in the central neighborhood, is a building. And this one was awarded to Beacon Communities LLC. The proposed use of this one is to renovate the three-story building into ninety senior units. They would also create amenities and spaces to support management of the property. The appraisal for this one was a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and that was the offer that was made by Beacon Communities LLC. Next slide, please. Could you go back one? I didn't realize you had moved on to Central. Okay, so Central High School, located at twenty-two twenty-five East Fortieth Street in the central neighborhood. The award in this one went to Beacon Communities LLC. Oh, wait, 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 I'm sorry. Is that the one I just did, Central? Okay, I'm sorry, go to the next one, then, I'm sorry. Okay. Charles Lake, I apologize. This one is located at nine two zero one Hillitt Road, if I pronounced that correctly. Don't know that street. It is in the Glenville neighborhood. The award on this one was made to Ozark Construction, and they're in partnership with McCormick Baron Salazar. The proposal for this one is mixed-income housing with small-scale retail. And the appraisal for it was a hundred eighty-five thousand with the award given and the offer for, at the offer price of a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Next slide, please. Empire Junior High School is located at ninety-one thirty-three Palmer Lee Avenue in Glenville. This award was given to Beacon Communities LLC. It is a multifamily housing development. The award was granted at a sale price of sixty-five thousand, and that was actually the appraisal that CMSD received on the property, sixty-five thousand. Next slide. Iowa Maple. It's located at one two five one zero Maple Avenue in Glenville. This one is a little different than some of the others. The awardee here was Excel Schools Ohio, and their intention is to actually reopen this as an educational charter, for an educational charter use. So they intend to still operate it as a school. The appraisal came in at sixty-five thousand for this location, and that's the offer that was made by Excel. Next slide, please. Mount Auburn Elementary School, located at one zero one one zero Mount Auburn Avenue in the central neighborhood. The award here was made to the community builders, also again, in partnership with Burtonville Car Development Corporation. And the proposed use is to, is to put apartments in the building. The appraisal came in for this one at twenty-five thousand. That's the offer that's been made for it. Next slide, please. Martin Luther King Junior High School, located at sixteen fifty-one East Seventy-first Street in Huff. This one was awarded to Structures Unlimited LLC. The proposed use is for new construction, housing, retail, and also an educational use. So they would actually use the facility and expand the campus. The appraisal offer, the appraisal, excuse me, was eight hundred eighty thousand dollars, and that's the price that was offered for the property, eight hundred eighty thousand dollars. Next slide, please. Nathaniel Hawthorne School is located at thirty-five seventy-five West Hundred thirtieth Street in the Jefferson neighborhood. This one was awarded to Sustainable Communities Associates, and their intent is to put loft apartments in that, in that building. The appraised price was forty-five thousand, and that's the price that they've offered for the property. And then the next slide, which is Robert Fulton, is located at thirty-two ninety-one East Hundred fortieth Street in the Mount Pleasant neighborhood. That one is being awarded to Tover Development Corporation. The intent is to put housing in the building and green space around. They're still settling on final plans, but that's the, that's the goal right now. The appraisal came in at seventy-nine thousand, and they've made the offer of seventy-nine thousand for the property. And then the last slide should be Stephen Howe, that's located at one zero 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 Lakeview Road in Glenville. The awardee on this one was the Revitalization Strategies Group. The appraisal came in at a hundred twenty thousand, and they made the offer for a hundred twenty thousand. It is vacant land. Their intent is to construct forty-six new construction low-income, excuse me, low-income townhomes geared towards families in two-story buildings with two, three, and four-bedroom units. And also to do surface parking. So those are the ten sites. And, you know, again, we're going through the due diligence stage and before we transfer the properties, and we're seeking authority to be able to enter into agreements with these developers.
I will move approval. I think that, so for those who don't know, state law is pretty prescriptive about if the school, the school district can offer the charters, and then it can offer to the community before it goes to open market. So I think by ensuring that, you know, we were able to come in at this point and be a part of making sure that these are all good uses, I'm particularly excited about the prospect of rehabilitating historic and very beautiful school buildings, something that I just think we should all keep in mind as we move forward, especially with the development sites, is a lot of these are located in neighborhoods where the tree canopy is pretty low, and there's an ability to balance new build on the site with, not just to plant trees, but to plant trees that will be large-growth trees that will contribute to the tree canopy, not just ornamentals, because we're not going to meet our climate goals if we're just putting ornamental trees on tree lots.
I would like to applaud CMSD and the city for coming up with a process whereby we can redevelop these sites. I think as we move into the future, there's, looking at other innovative ways, other partnerships that could generate the interest that this has garnered. So I take my hat off to you guys, thanks.
I'll sign the motion, but do we need to do it ordinance by ordinance?
Yeah, I was going to say, we need to go back and do these one by one. So maybe if there are any other comments or discussion before we go for each individual one? Any commission members, any other sort of discussion or questions? No. The only comment I have is, or question is, for, in general, I think schools play a role in kind of open space or recreational space, sometimes in neighborhoods where playgrounds or other amenities are really accessible, and there may not be any other access to open space. So I guess that's just a general question across all of these. Are there any requirements that are being placed in writing about sort of public access, especially for recreational use? Or is it on a case-by-case basis?
Yeah, so absolutely, and we're in agreement with that. And for most of these, there is a public access. In some cases, there, the design will create walkthroughs and park-like spaces. And in some of the other buildings, where they're opening up the auditorium and spaces in the building, they're meant to be spaces for the community and not just for residents in the building. So each is unique, but yeah, we are actually looking at that. And then, you know, because these are extensive proposals, so I didn't go into the detail, and especially without, you know, each respective development team here. But in addition, you know, some of these proposals are coming in with requests for land bank lots or the city lots around them so that there can be more build-out, and not just on the school site, but actually on surrounding parts of the neighborhood and creating those park-like spaces and other access points. So yeah, all of that's very critical to making this development success.
So I would just encourage as those things develop, I know in the next phases, that some of that be sort of put in writing in terms of, let's say, specific, especially park and amenity space, because I think down the line, there's always a gray area between privately-owned public space. So it's certainly a lot of civic space that I think played a role in how people who lived around these schools felt that they lived around public space. So I know you're on it, but for me, it's just really important that some components, you know, are enhancements for amenities for communities or neighborhoods that surround these spaces. So I know you're on it, I just really wanted to just say it.
Well, and let me say also that what we're doing here is positioning ourselves to be able to transfer the properties, to sell them. But all of these groups will have to come before the planning commission, where zoning is applicable, you know, so all. You know, so all city processes will have to be met. And as they come to, to us for funding, there are all of those things from environmental reviews to, to, um, you know, the, the, the detail of what has to be done to pull together a capital stack. There's, uh, some of them applying to, uh, OFA, uh, for, for Lytec funding. So there's, there's different streams of funding in there that come along, that, that have requirements with those. And then again, like I said, the planning commission, uh, permitting, zoning. So they'll have to go through all of that, you know, and, and the, uh, community meetings. We're very diligent about the community meeting. So we're not just, you know, selling property that way.
I, I understand. I wonder if there should be a minimum floor. I'm not going to require it, but, um, I think to Charles's point about tree canopy and green access. I just wonder across all of these, if the city ought to have a minimum floor of, I'm making it up. Ten, fifteen, twenty percent of these sites, uh, should be green or should be, you know, park or like or accessible green space. That, you know, there ought to be a minimum floor that gives the city some ability to say, across all these plans as they develop, we have a North Star goal of ensuring that these have some amount of public, you know, defined in different ways, whether it's through just green space or walkways or et cetera. Some percentage that just helps guide the city to, to all the developers. So I don't know, um.
I, I agree, Lillian. I think maybe the opportunity is the headquarters. Because I would, I would hope that that's, that, that ceiling or, or, or minimum threshold has been established on that project.
Ha, has it?
I don't know. That was my point.
Oh, um, so anyway, um, I think Charles, are you're gonna make a motion across all these? I don't know if they're, you, how you feel about.
And just, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion across all of them. I don't know if it's possible like we do in council meetings, just to, uh, uh, indicate opposition or extensions individually, meaning cycle through them. Uh, but I, I'll make a motion across all of the school site and ensure mandatory referrals.
Okay.
Okay. And then I'll throw a motion a second. Let's go through each one though and see if there are any abstentions or any. So here's the first one, which is three zero five five, uh, Martin Luther King. We have a motion and a second. We're gonna take the roll on this one. Um, any, any abstentions or any issues? Okay, so let's take the roll for this one.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slyf.
Yes.
Okay, second one, we have a motion and a second. If we can go to the next page, please. Um, this is at nine-two-zero-one Hillcock Avenue. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Can we take the roll? Are there any abstentions? Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slyf.
Yes.
Okay, the next one. Is located at one-six-five-one East Seventy-first Street. Um, and, uh, let's take, um, uh, roll on this as well.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Slyf.
Yes.
Okay. Um, the next one is one-zero-one-one-zero Mount Auburn Avenue. Um, let's take the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slyf.
Yeah.
Okay. Two-one-nine-nine East Fortieth Street. We can take the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Slyf.
Yes.
Uh, nine-one-one-three Palmer Lee Avenue. You can call the roll.
Okay, sorry, Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slyf.
Yes.
Um, one-two-five-one-zero Maple Avenue, call the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slyf.
Yes.
And then, uh, three-five-seven-five West One-thirtieth.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Slyf.
Yes.
And I believe, uh, is this the last one? This is three-two-nine-one East One-fourthian.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slyf.
Yes.
I was wronged, um, one thousand Lakeview Road.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Slyf.
Yes.
Uh, all motions carry, obviously, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll turn it back over to David.
Thank you, Lillian. Uh, take a look at the administrative approvals, please, and I'll take a motion when you're ready.
So move, I move approval.
Second, Fluker.
We have a motion, a second. Uh, Michael, call the roll, please.
Owen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Slyf.
Yes.
Motion carries. We have a special presentation, uh, Buckeye Road TLCI Plan Seeking.
David, I ask a question. I'm just curious, um, and I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, I know that, uh, we had some quorum issues last time and we made today. So I'm wondering if this, I'm just asking, if there are items on the agenda at the end that are urgent, that are for vote? If this ought to come after? And, and I only ask because this TLCI, it's extremely important. And I don't mean to say that it isn't, but I know there were some issues when we did this at the last meeting.
I mean, we could take it at the end. We all received the hundred and forty-five pages. I was just gonna ask for the executive summary.
Okay, I, I just wanna be careful.
Did you, did you, did you receive that, Lillian?
I did. We all got the link in advance, so I'm fine with that. I just wanted to, to note that and know that I have an, I have a recusal coming towards later. So, uh, and, and we do, I think so does August. So I just wanna be really mindful of the agenda.
Okay, so let's do this. Um, whoever's gonna present to this, can they do it in fifteen minutes or less?
Yeah, but Lillian has to leave at eleven, right?
Oh, at eleven?
Yes. Is that correct?
Okay. It is? Okay, so let's leave that special presentation for last. Design Review, uh, this is, uh, Project Boron, new construction. And this is for, uh, final approval. Who's here for this?
Mr. Chairman, Shannon Leonard has her hand raised.
Yeah, Shannon.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Bowen, um, could we just re- rediscover real quickly the tabling of the PRO case? Um, can we articulate for Michael what the tabling was for? As well as whether they should proceed to BZA on Monday? Or should we table for them to, uh, meet, uh, as a group or however, uh, to discuss making all alternatives?
It's, it's for them to, uh, reconvene and meet and see if there's some kind of ground on it.
Okay, so should we wait to go to BZA?
That's up to them if they want to go to BZA, but we gotta keep on moving. And if they want to call me afterwards, they can call me.
Okay, sounds good.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Bowen, if I just may add to, um, with respect to that, uh, plan, the, that's a plan adoption. So there's a, a decision that needs to be made on the Buckeye.
We'll get that Friday. We're just, I'm trying to get, uh, as many things through here as Lillian's gonna be around for. So two-seven-seven-seven East Seventy-fifth Street, this is the Boron Project Final Approval. Who's here for this?
Kurt Updugraff, I'm Director of Development for Weston.
Okay, is there anyone with you, Kurt, or is it just you?
Just me.
Okay, can you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
Yes, I do.
Okay, give us the executive summary so we keep a quorum.
The project is, uh, located between East Seventy-fifth, East Seventy-ninth, and Opportunity Corridor to the north and RTA, uh, line to the south. Five, or a hundred and fifty-six thousand square foot refrigerated warehouse building. And, uh, it will serve, uh, the greater Cleveland area. There will be people delivering products from outside of Cleveland. And this will be distributed within Cleveland. Some products will be shipped from Cleveland Manufacturers, stored here, and then shipped out to other, uh, parts of the country. Um, I guess we could scroll down on this. So you can just, uh, just, so just refresh everybody in the location. The red line is the Opportunity Corridor. You can see Orlando Bakery Company to the north of Opportunity Corridor. The green is the project site, which is between East Seventy-fifth, Seventy-ninth, uh, east and west. And, uh, RTA green and blue line to the south and, uh, Opportunity Corridor to the north. This is the surrounding area, so there is Orlando Bakery's building. And we have borrowed from some of that, uh, finished sched, finished scheme on there on our building. Um, this is Opportunity Corridor, looking, uh, east. Then we got, uh, East Seventy-ninth on the other side. These are going fast. This is the west side of East Seventy-fifth. This is looking south from our site to the RTA lines. So basically, the summary there is there's a lot of empty lots around, empty property on all sides of the, the project. Uh, southwest is some sort of a, uh, almost looks like a, uh, a junkyard. I'm not sure what's over there. It's behind a, uh, an enclosure. Uh, so this is the site plan of the building. This was as presented to the East Design Review Board on Tuesday. They approved this plan, so you can see we have the visitor and employee parking at the northwest corner, which is upper left. Uh, the truck docks are to the left, which is, uh, to the west between the building and East Seventy-fifth. Separate access to parking and truck dock area. There's truck storage to the left. Uh, um, we do have provided, so, uh, a space for, uh, future parking if it's needed, land bank area. The one change here in, in the stormwater retention is to the south, towards the bottom. The one change that the Design Review Board wanted was that slanted sidewalk that goes from the north. So the office area, that bump out to the north, up to the, um, the trail there, the sidewalk on Opportunity Corridor. Uh, they wanted that, uh, coming directly into the, uh, front door of the building, uh, with a little bit of landscaping beds on either side. And that would be squared off of Opportunity Corridor, so run south through Opportunities Corridor at ninety-degree angle. The next slide is the landscaping. We put quite a bit more landscaping in here, uh, just for example, directly to the north of the proposed building. So the facade is going to be about forty feet, thirty-eight, forty feet high there. Uh, the upper left is the office area. That's a lower, uh, roofed building. But we had six deciduous trees along the north side of the warehouse portion of the building, uh, in a straight line. Designer B1 had those a little more naturalized and a little more intensive planting. So we've added crab apples. We've, we've altered, uh, none of the plantings are in straight line. We added some evergreen trees. And likewise elsewhere around the site, just screening the parking from Opportunity Corridor, we intensified the landscaping there. Between the part, the, uh, loading dock area and East Seventy-fifth, we put quite a bit more landscaping in there. Uh, arborvitus, uh, fair amount, so that's, that's gonna grow into a complete screen along there. Uh, again, the drive, the, the sidewalk coming in from the north is, that will be squared off instead of angled like that. The next slide. These elevations show, uh, it's a little difficult to see here, but the Design Review Board had suggested some sort of breakup of that big facade. So we, we ran a horizontal stripe there, which is, uh, it's kind of a, just above the doors to the left and a little bit behind this, the, the trees. Next slide. Next slide is, oh, I'm sorry, the next one after this one. This is the rendering. Uh, you can kind of see that stripe to the left. Uh, we, also, uh, the Design Review had wanted the windows to the left of the tower more evenly spaced, so we had to add a window. Uh, we have four windows that are evenly spaced. And then to the right of the, of the tower is, um, there was just the one window, which is into the break room. Otherwise, there were locker room and bathrooms there. So they wanted a little more articulation instead of just a blank brick wall. So we kind of, we did a, uh, this is all stone, but we did brick inlay inserts there to give it a little bit more rhythm. So that's that. The next slide. This is the finished schedule, so you see the stone, the brick, uh, some black trim metal, black window frames. You can also see the color of that red stripe. Maybe, uh, I don't know how to describe it, but it's, uh, it's not quite brick red, I, but it's a little brighter than that. And that, I don't know, was there, was there a slide added showing the new landscaping and sidewalk? I thought I read that in an email, but, uh, maybe not. Oh, there it is. Okay. Oh, yeah, this, this is the revision showing the sidewalk to the north, uh, connecting directly to the existing trail sidewalk that's, uh, on the south side of Opportunity Corridor. So you can see we run, run a eight-foot sidewalk in there with, uh, trees flanking, or, uh, not trees, but trebery flanking net. So that creates more of a, uh, point of entrance, I guess, to the tower, which is the front door of the building.
Great, thank you. So commission members, uh, they picked up the two comments from Design Review.
I move appro-
All right, second.
Go ahead, Diane.
I'm, I was moving approval.
All right, second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, further discussion. Michael, call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
I have to recuse myself. I apologize. I shouldn't have mentioned it earlier.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Slyf.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Next is, uh, Police Stables, new construction, seeking thematic approval. Who's here for this one?
Mark Dulick, uh, Mayor's Office Capital Project Division of Architecture and Site Development.
Hey, Mark.
Hey, Ray.
So, so your staff, I don't have to swear you in. Is there anyone outside that's gonna be speaking besides you?
Yes.
Who's that?
Uh, Robert Clamton-Madison here.
Okay, uh, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay, great. Let's have the executive summary, please. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I must recuse myself. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, August.
Um, good morning, everyone. On behalf of the Mayor's Office Capital Projects and the, uh, the Department of Public Safety and particularly the Cleveland Police Mounted Unit, it's a, it's real. Department of Public Safety and particularly the Cleveland Police Mounted Unit, it's a, it's real pleasure present this project, this is the new home for the Cleveland Police Mounted Unit. Their current seventy-year-old home is not only obsolete, it is being taken for the easing of the Dead Man's Curve project by ODOT. After an exhaustive search for an appropriate site of six acres, which is required for a facility of this type, we were fortunate to be able to find the site in the poet streets area of Cleveland, which is east of Fifty-Fifth and between Cedar and Central and Ashland Avenue. It's been mostly vacated over the years of a former two-family, single-family neighbor with some industrial. And it's really in the heart of the city, which is one of the things we were looking for. This map just shows where the location is on the upper left, that's number three. And this just puts it in context of the other public safety investments here in the east side of the city of Cleveland, the new police headquarters on which ground was broken and the new fire station twenty-six on which ground was broken this week as well. And we had our ceremonial groundbreaking, we are in the process of site preparation or remediation for this stables project. We can take a quick walk through the neighborhood, I believe all those slides are here. Just as we are creating this new facility on this site, which consists of embodies the current best practices for the health, safety and welfare of both our equine and our human Cleveland Mounted Police Officers. We are, since this is a community outreach unit, the goal was to find a location and create a facility that is an embodiment of the mission of the Cleveland Mounted Police Unit, which is one of the most important community outreach units we have, as they are engaged in providing safety at all kinds of public events and celebrations. The site lends itself very well because it's very accessible and about halfway between downtown and midtown. One of the criteria was at least it was within riding distance of downtown as well as most neighborhoods. And this is, although most of the horses will come and go by trailer. Let's take a quick walk around the site, please. As you can see right now, the bulk of the land is vacant. We were very fortunate to have this collection of land bank properties, it's bordered by Thackeray Avenue on the north Hawthorne Avenue on the south. It's looking back towards Fifty-Fifth. There are some remaining residents in the neighborhood, we have engaged in a had a couple of community meetings in conjunction with our friends at the planning commission as well as Councilwoman Gray and earlier Councilwoman Cleveland, this is in their ward. And we've got a lot of support and it was our pleasure to present this to the neighborhood designer view committee this past Tuesday and receive their approval and their very constructive input. We are seeking schematic approval for this project today from the commission. We are vacating several unused alleyways in the heart of the site to create the contiguous area we need for this project. Next slide, please. This shows how the components array themselves on the site. This project has turned out to be very driven by the technicalities of ensuring that you can have all the necessary onsite circulation for the operations of the mounted unit without having to take vehicles on and off the street at all times. What's there to the westerly part of the site and the northerly portion along Thackeray Avenue constitutes a large indoor training arena that's required for year-round training of the mounted unit horses and officers. An administrative wing there on the easterly end of that building, a horse hub and then a north-south wing that actually has sixteen stalls for the mounted unit horses and then a service building and garage to the south. There to the east along Hawthorne Avenue is a large paddock and training area as well. The horses are required to be turned out on a regular basis and a daily basis. We'll get into a little more detail on the actual operations of the plant. We're also incorporating there at the northeast corner of the site along Thackeray Avenue, a small public park that is integrated into the entry sequence and parking area for this facility, which even the current facility is often host to school groups, tour groups, individuals coming to visit. This is intended to be a very open welcoming destination, not only for the people in the neighborhood, but for people from all over Cleveland. Those of you who've had the pleasure of visiting the unit, you know how, how friendly and engaging everyone there is. Next slide, please. This shows how the floor plan operates, there's that park up on the right and the parking. There's the arena up there to the upper left. You can see in the blue is all of our administrative areas from the roll call rooms to the locker rooms, et cetera. That purple area is a lobby that also functions as a museum for the history of the Cleveland Mounted Police Unit. One of the oldest units in the United States. And the community room that will be accessible to the public, but also provides viewing opportunities both for the public and for training purposes of the inside of the training exercises that will be happening in this arena. The south of the arena is the horse hub and service area. And there's that north-south wing with the aisle between the sixteen stalls. And then each of those stalls has an individual turnout paddock, so that can basically leave the Dutch doors open and let the horses come in and out. There's the hay and shavings and manure disposal area there on the south that wing. The manure will be emptied on a very regular basis, a minimum weekly, and that will be used for composting purposes and community gardening and et cetera, it's part of the community outreach efforts. And then there's a garage for the trucks there on the lower left. You see the round pen and the westerly end of the paddock and the park there. This is all designed so that anybody coming in to visit the facility has a view of the training, the horses when they're turned out and is welcomed into the facility. This rear area allows for all vehicle maneuvering, including this pull-through feature, which we found from studying other facilities is a very important part of this, so you can have a unit coming and a unit going based on that plan at both ends of this. That backyard area will have the, the service court area will have trailers and the garage. That's where all of the kind of back of the house activities will happen for the facility. Next, please. This is an aerial view looking from the northwest, you can see the barn there in the foreground, you can see how that utility court operates in the garage. And you can see the stables wing and the round pen and the paddock in the distance, next, please. This shows that view from the southeast with the round pen, you can see how the arrangement of all of these occur. This area will be fenced securely and visitors will be able to be escorted by the mounted police unit officers from the parking area and the administrative area, both through the inside of the stables to see the horses and also to view all of the activities on the outside. Another beautiful piece of this site is that even casually walking, biking or driving down the streets, the horses will be visible in the paddock areas as well as the training areas, next, please. These are some views of the developing architecture, there's the the entrance along Thackeray Avenue with the window into the lobby that features the relocated Victor Shrek and Gost horse head statue. That's the O'Neill Memorial for the mounted unit. You can see the view through the stables wing, you can see the horse hub there, and you can see a view of that back service court area as well as an interior view of the arena. Believe that's our presentation. Thank you very much and order your questions.
Uh, commission members.
Looks great, so I would like to move approval, Downing.
I will second. My only request is if there's an ability, I know if this were around the corner from my house, I would be constantly standing here with my toddler watching horses. So if there's a way to maybe think of, as you had mentioned, people walking by are going to be able to experience, if that's like benches or something that people can actually kind of sit and linger and enjoy, I think that'd be a really nice amenity. Something to consider on the exterior of that paddock. And then I'll just say, and we can discuss this later as a planning commission, but my fervent support of this project should not be confused with support for the realignment of Dead Man's Curve. I think it's a boondoggle waste of money project from the Ohio Department of Transportation. And those monies could be much better spent on transportation projects elsewhere in our community and state.
I, I know that was your second, I actually totally agree with you Charles. So this is, this is not final approval, so I wonder if it should be part of the motion that we encourage. It's just so amazing, I say this, I love the design, it's so thoughtful. It's really a huge amenity and unusual to have it, so to Charles's point, I wonder if we should include in the motion that when they come back for final approval, that there be more of a sort of thought of sort of how the community can really witness this and bring their kids and it's just a learning and an asset. So just a little bit more about that when they come back. If that could be added to the motion.
That's fine with me to add that to my motion.
Okay, we have a motion second, further discussion. Michael, call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Slife.
Yeah.
Thank you Mark, congratulations.
Thank you, happy holidays everyone, we really appreciate it.
You too.
Thank you.
Near West Design Review, this is the Pearl Mixed Use Building, new construction seeking conceptual approval. Who's here for this?
Mr. Chairman, this is Matt Moss, the applicant informed me that they'd like this tabled until the new year so they can refine their concept. They're not, they don't feel they're ready yet to present this and they simply were looking for conceptual feedback from the local committee.
Okay, great, can I get a motion to table?
I'll move to table, Downing.
Second Curry.
Motion second, Michael, call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Slife.
Yeah.
And I need to recuse myself from this next one.
You're knocking down buildings low, Diane?
Just, as you know, where we're moving, proximity.
Yeah, proposed demolition of a one-story industrial building seeking final approval, this is under ordinance three, four, one, dash, or point zero eight of the Cleveland Codified Ordinance. This is located at one, eight, five, nine, East Sixty-third Street. Who's here for this, please?
I am Matt Connect, President of HTW Environmental Consultants.
Please raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Great, go ahead, make it the executive summary.
Absolutely, the intent is to demolish four buildings associated with the former MPC plating facility in Cleveland's Midtown neighborhood. We did have the pleasure yesterday of gaining their unanimous approval of this action. Essentially, it consists of four buildings. The main MPC building is marked as number one on the west side of East Sixty-Fifth Street. And then on the east side of East Sixty-Fifth Street are building number two, which is a cold storage building. Building number three, which is known as the buffing building. And building number four, which is the northeastern building. Also will be demolishing several parking areas marked in P on this map that show up, three of them in total, and there's some pavements on the west side of building number one, next slide, please. This is just an color enhancement to show the actual property that is involved and was owned by MPC, next slide, please. Going to go through a series of buildings, the photographs of the buildings, this is the south portion of the MPC building facing Euclid Avenue. This is the interior, a typical shot of the office space. A typical shot of the plating area inside the building, a loading dock, truck dock area in building one. Then we moved across and we're now in the cold storage building, this is a typical shot of the, these are typical shots of the interior, the cold storage building. This is, the next slide will move us, this is a laboratory in the cold storage building. Next slide is the buffing building. These are all slides of the buffing building, and then the last two slides are the northeastern building, interior and truck dock. These are exterior shots, this is essentially looking down East Sixty-Fifth toward Euclid. This is the truck dock on the western portion of MPC. And this final slide is essentially the black highlighted area between Euclid and Chester is essentially the conceptual plan in the future. You can see it in context to Dave's Market site, the Magnet site, the True Hotel site and Dunham Tavern and the Cleveland Foundation's currently, headquarters currently under construction. That is the end of my presentation.
Great, thank you, commission members.
I move approval, Downing.
Second, Lucker.
We have a motion second, further discussion. Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
Yes, I'm sorry.
McRae Scott.
Yes.
Slife.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Downtown Flats Design Review, this is Rock and Roll Hall of Fame Music Plaza signage seeking final approval. Who's here for this, please? Anyone? Rock and roll? Going once. We'll move it to the back, we have Near West Design Review new member nomination, Gideon Hart Esquire. Please take a look at the resume, which I think you guys have already done.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
The signage for the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame was approved yesterday by the Downtown Flats Design Review Committee. Given the departure of Mr. Centaur, I substituted in that discussion with respect to the signage, I do not know why the individuals are not on the call this morning. If you would like, we can go through this presentation or we can just table it until the applicants are present.
Well, let's do this, I got the Near, Near West Design Review for the Gideon Hart to be the new nomination for Design Review. Can I get a motion on him?
I'll move, I move approval, Downing.
Second, Lucker.
Got motion second, further discussion. Call the roll, Michael.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
Okay, so commission members, we have a choice here. We can look at this signage and Freddie can walk us through since he's familiar with it, is that good for you guys?
Fine with me.
Fine, yeah.
Let's move forward, Freddie, go ahead.
All right, this is a LED digital sign that's going to be placed in the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame Plaza. It's going to be fronting on Rock and Roll Boulevard, it's located just to the south of the site at the main entry level, and you can see where the square is on the map, next slide. If you look at the area here, it shows the zoning, which is a general retail for district, which, which allows for this particular type of sign. And Shannon, if you want to articulate with respect to the zoning code, this type of LED display and its allowances.
So this type of display is permitted by right in a general industry district. There are no limitations on the, like how long the screen has to be up on one static image. That's generally only in a residential district or local retail. In this case, obviously, they are regulated by no flashing, no scrolling, et cetera. That is the average, the general regulations under the sign code. They're also are not allowed to be so bright that they obstruct traffic or anything of that nature. But for this specific type of signage at this location, it is permitted by right. Obviously, they are allowed to they are allowed to show signage of, you know, artists that are on site, things that are on site, things that are coming to their, like as a events that are coming to the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. Obviously, for instance, U2 doesn't live at the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, but if U2 was coming to the, to the, the space, they obviously can do all types of advertising around U2, et cetera. But in general, this type of signage is permitted by right.
Thank you, Shannon. And then with respect to the design, one of the things that was incorporated in here that the design review committee And then with respect to the design, um, one of the things that was incorporated in here, uh, that the Design Review Committee um, appreciated was the rock boxes, which are typically freestanding. Um, that play music during uh, certain durations throughout the day. It was incorporated into the actual sign, as you can see in that previous illustration. Um, the sign is aluminum, uh, for the most part, that would sit on the base that you see here, which is existing. Um, the discussion ensued with respect to off-site advertisements. Um, and there's a clear understanding about that, as Shannon shared. There is a fixed advertisement at the bottom here, but that's really associated with naming uh, rights. And that was articulated by the uh, Rock Hall. Um, with respect to the design, one thing that was brought up was the fact that this um, the angles on the sign uh, really lends itself to the design of the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. Uh, when you look at the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame and the plaza and the atrium, you, it gives you that kind of uh, look of a guitar. And this uh, sign angle, you know, kind of gives you that uh, feel uh, of the Rock Hall. So overall, um, there was really no issues. There was discussions around illumination. Um, when you come to the intersection, uh, one's ability to uh, be able to see and not be distracted uh, came up. Um, but the fact that it was facing Rock and Roll Boulevard, um, and that at that corner, if you go back to the beginning slide, is not angled straight on into the intersection. It'll be literally facing the Rock and Roll Boulevard uh, frontage. So that's the gist of the uh, presentation.
Thanks, Freddie. Commission members.
I move approval Downing.
Second.
We have a motion, two seconds. Uh, further discussion? Michael, call the roll.
Owen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Luker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
Motion carries. Um, we move on to the special presentation. This is the Buckeye Road uh, T L C I plan. Who's here for this one?
This is Michelle Bandizella Torres with City Architecture.
Thanks for hanging out with us.
Sure thing.
And Marka Fields.
Hey, Marka.
Hello.
Um, okay, let's go through the presentation.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I, I want to reiterate, I must recuse myself.
Go ahead.
Okay, um.
So go ahead with the presentation. Try to, try to keep it fairly quick so we don't warm.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, so um, this is for um, Buckeye T L C I, which is little Buckeye Road refresh. And this plan is uh, for Buckeye Road and it goes from Wood Hill Road to South Moreland. And the goal was to try to improve conditions along the road, um, as well as um, connecting to the various assets that are in the area and the um, different uh, um, so the surrounding uh, communities uh, in the area. We go to the next slide. So, the uh, study, the study focused on several different things. One is bicycle planning. Exploring the potential for bike lanes along Buckeye Road and recommendations for connections to existing and proposed bike paths and other regional assets, pedestrian planning. Um, identifying areas where a huge volume of pedestrian traffic and consider interventions, enhance crosswalks to improve pedestrian safety. The traffic analysis, providing a guide for how to address the need for multiple modes of transportation in safe and equitable way. With particular focus on congestion at the East Hundred and Sixteenth and Buckeye intersection. Also, the parking analysis, identifying parking demands in various locations and analyze redistribution of parking resources based on those demands and looking for new opportunities for district parking. The land use planning, which is to explore the appropriate land use along the western portion of the corridor and review existing recommendations for the eastern portion of corridor. And also reviewing setbacks to encourage a pedestrian-friendly environment. Um, study present, uh, study preservation and reuse of existing mixed-use buildings and infill and transit-oriented development. And then some of the other goals were um, to help inform the uh, Mayor's Transformation Initiative as well as the street resurfacing, which um, MOCAP received funding for to uh, do a street resurfacing along Buckeye Road within that entire um, stretch of Buckeye. You can go to the next slide. So, um, MOCAP began their design work in twenty twenty, um, and they did public engagement. Set a public, public engagement platform. Um, we, the, the one thing that was somewhat unique about this project that was different, that's different from a lot of the others that we did is that we had uh, MOCAP at the table the entire time. So they were actually at all of the community meetings, able to hear what the residents wanted firsthand and as they were putting the plans together, they understood the, the spirit and intent of the plan and were able to incorporate some of those designs. Um, and where there were some uh, questions about um, certain things that the community wanted, we came back and had an additional meeting in October and um, ensured that what we were doing was actually um, desired by the community. So the community engagement was really um, robust in this process. Um, which is really good considering the fact that we were uh, in the midst of COVID as well. So just trying to um, get the uh, get the input from residents. You know, we initially thought would be a great challenge, but it actually turned out really well. And so a part of this was a streetscape amenity, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars for streetscape. And the residents were able to prioritize what it is that they wanted to see in the streetscape. And engineering instruction took that into consideration and incorporated those things into their plan. And so Michelle will go into more detail about the plan.
All right, thank you very much. And um, this was an intensive project. We covered a lot of grounds within a, covered a lot of ground within a six-month planning period. Um, and so we're going to cover a lot of ground and move through this material really briskly um, this morning, just to give you a sense of it. It was a, it was, it was a very intensive planning process. Um, we had a lot of team, large team, project team, because we wanted to keep many voices at the table. As with any T L C I project, there were multiple areas of focus and those were things um, that, that Marka um, described in, in the previous slides. Next slide, please. And, and Mr. Bostak, you're welcome to just kind of scroll through things and I can just talk, just to give an overview. Um, it was really critical to position this district to be a leader in twenty-first century details. So those were the types of things we looked at. And critical to that process was making sure that we had a lot of voices at the table making the decisions and that we were bringing transparency to how decisions were made. So we were very intentional about how we were going to do outreach and how many touchpoints we wanted from that standpoint. We exceeded that. We provided a lot of different opportunities to connect with people in terms of youth activities. Um, community trivia nights, online surveys with hundreds of participants. It was incredibly successful and critical in ensuring that community voices guided this work. That set a series of project priorities, um, from which we developed the design. And we have, next slide, please. We took a look at quantitative aspects of the street to understand the environment that existed there and that impacted the decisions that we were going to make. We also took a look at the qualitative aspects of the street. Next slide, please. Um, and one of the things, I think, there are two things that really stood out when we analyzed the street from a qualitative standpoint. That there is zero street trees within the right-of-way along Buckeye within this planning area. And that there are two hundred and sixty light and power poles along the stretch of Buckeye, which represents one pole every twenty-eight feet. There were over sixty excess and duplicate poles in place. Things that once, once utilities were removed, were just left in the, in the right-of-way, which was, which was um, incredibly surprising to everyone. We've got a very narrow right-of-way here, fifty-four feet, and it also a narrow partway. One of the narrowest in the cities for what has been acting as a four-lane road of thirty-eight feet. That meant the traffic along the street was very unpredictable and we needed to develop an approach um, that would help add predictability and safety into the operations of the street. It's a long, one point four miles. It's a long district. And we realized that there were different, um, different details that needed to be developed for different, different parts of the street. This is the area from Martin Luther King Junior Drive to South Moreland Boulevard. Um, the eastern portion where we have more of a commercial district. Parking was the priority here to support the existing businesses. And so we took a look at a new, uh, a new layout that created permanent on-street parking all of the time. That is critical to supporting those businesses and to adding predictability and safety to the driving movements by having one lane of, of traffic in each direction. On the western end of the corridor, we have traded that parking on both sides of the street um, with bike lanes, uh, protected bike lanes, um, along the street because we didn't have the need for on-street parking there. And this was an excellent place to collect, to connect to the larger bike network. Next slide, please. And we took a look at the, at how we would, whoops, uh, how we would build um, the district in with that network. We also, and so looking at existing and proposed, making sure that we were providing good opportunities to connect people with Opportunity Corridor and to the Lake to Lakes Trail. Um, on that eastern end, looking at a variety of parking strategies, but with that permanent on-street parking adding three hundred and one spaces or making three hundred and one spaces available um, at all times is a critical boost to the neighborhood as well as looking at ways that we could create some very specific um, options for off-street parking. And one of those was a park, a small parking lot prototype that needed to do more than just provide spaces for cars. It needed to serve the neighborhood. And so we were looking at this as something that can provide um, bike share stations and electric vehicle charging and fix-it stations and scooter parking kind of all in one spot. This is a very narrow sidewalk and we heard a lot about people feeling not safe, uh, walking so close to that unpredictable traffic. We took a look at the widths along the length. Next slide, please. And developed a series of prototypes, um, for the types of things that we could fit within those to provide that critical buffer between pedestrians and the moving vehicles. That does change, however, we also get that additional on-street parking um, as a buffer as well. But took a look at how those concepts could be applied along the length. One of the things the community was really excited about was the idea of incorporating parklets, um, to expand the commercial district sidewalks and the ability um, to use Buckeye as a place where it is used a lot within the neighborhood. So this is a place where, where parklets um, um, can add a special character to the neighborhood. So uh, we developed a, a flexible parklet prototype as part of this project, um, something that can be put away and stored in the winter, uh, but that can accommodate a wide range of activities. Transit is critical. We've got four transit lines and twenty-four transit stops within the district. And so, and eighty percent of those do not, um, those bus stops do not meet um, the standards, the ridership standards for having structures. And what we heard loud and clear from the community was that better, better conditions were needed at transit stops. And so as part of the planning process, next slide, please, we looked at a range of, of ways to improve that experience. And then, next slide, please. Developed a small transit stop uh, prototype that provides buffer from the roadway, um, some overhead shelter from the elements, solar charging, um, a solar panel with charging stations uh, for people's electronics and, and protected waiting area. Um, we also looked at some bigger ideas and the idea of a connector between Shaker Square and Buckeye Road along the South Moreland Boulevard median, um, as, as a multi-use um, path. We, we needed to identify the priorities as part of that five hundred and sixty thousand dollar budget for the repaving project um, that Marka mentioned, and we needed to balance that with a range of things that were needed for the street. And so we, with working with the community, identified an additional initial amenities package that brought in streetscape improvements. And then the community also voted on that kind of leftover money from that initial package to, to prioritize parklets and community district signage. Um, this is the range of, of amenities. Again, we've got that first wave that comes through as part of the repaving project. We've got a second wave of some of those, those bigger ideas um, that are, that would be part of the next phase of implementation. And then we've got the long-term really big ideas like the South Moreland Midway Park, um, buried utilities, smart street, um, technology incorporation. And when we pull it all together, there's a lot, um, that, that, a lot of exciting things that I think are going to dramatically change the experience along Buckeye Avenue, Buckeye Road and, and improve, um, create a lot of improvements uh, for the community to utilize. And it is critical, the one thing that we want to emphasize throughout all of this um, is, is the absolute importance of continuing to connect community voices to these processes and keep community voices at the table as infrastructure is developed in the city. People aren't interested. We just need to find the right way to connect them to the process. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Commission members.
I think it looks great. Um, very exciting plan. Um, I just would ask, um, do we need a motion to approve this or?
Yes.
Yes, so I would.
You need approval.
Okay, I move approval. Thank you.
I'll second and, and just uh, share Diane's uh, you know, uh, commendations. This is a really critical corridor and in a very important neighborhood. And um, as much success as we see on, on uh, Larchmere and Shaker Square, I think by being able to take that energy down and have Buckeye be a, a strong corridor that also supports areas further than south, I, I think that that's a noble mission. It's got all the pieces in place for a dynamic uh, neighborhood and it's exciting to uh, bring them all together with plans like this.
Great, thank you. So we have a motion, second, further discussion. Michael, call the roll, please.
Owen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry. Lilian, are you still with us?
Nope.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director's report. Is there a director's report, Director?
Uh, no, there is not. This is the last meeting of the year and I just want to say thank you to uh, uh, everyone uh, involved. Uh, and who's been um, taking uh, part in the planning commission. The work that we do is extremely important. There has been a lot of cases uh, over the past several months and rightfully so. Um, one, that means development is happening in the city. Um, and two, you know, we uh, have to handle the business of the city. So when we have these situations where uh, we may not have enough time, it's just because of the volume and having to get things done and closed out. That comes with the territory. So um, just want to thank everybody for bearing with us. This has been a challenging couple of years. And I think we've, you know, adapted and we've been nimble. So just uh, appreciate that. And uh, I'm sure um, if I don't get a chance to see you guys, that you will have, uh, you know, good holiday uh, with your families. And uh, hope to see you one more time in the new year. And I'll be reaching out to each of you individually with some, some news. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Freddie. Um.
Mr. Chair, can I make one comment?
You can make a comment. You can make two if you want.
I, no, I, it's, it's actually, I am, I am so happy in Lilian's absent and my recusal that there was some recognition of bike lanes in the Buckeye Plan, because I could hear Lilian right now. So just wanted to point that out and, and give, give our fellow co- commission member uh, the props to, to advocate for that.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank all the commission members for getting through this agenda and, and finishing up the year with everything off our agenda. So have a nice holiday and next year.
Happy holiday.
Be safe.